All right. It's just not about things.
Just me.
Okay, we're all in. This too. Looks like we're missing Councilman White and Councilman Barrett so far. I haven't heard from either one, so hopefully they'll be showing up. But for the minutes. Well, I'll put that in the minutes, but we do have a form, so we'll proceed. It doesn't say a prayer now, but we're gonna do it anyway, so.
It does say prayer in mine.
Oh, really?
Opening ceremony, prayer.
Oh, mine's missing that. That's okay. Let's go ahead and, oh, that's because this is the wrong one. There, I can read up to this. We've asked Councilman Boozabark to give us the opening prayer, and then we'll recite the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, grateful to meet as a city council, and members of Roosevelt City, we're grateful for this city that we live in and land that we live in and the freedoms we enjoy. We ask you that thy might last this meeting with thy spirit, help us to make good decisions that benefit the citizens of Roosevelt City, that we can perform our duties to the best of our ability and help those in the city. We're grateful for the employees in the city and those that serve in the city, the police and fire and others, we're grateful for their work and their diligence and help them pray that will watch over and protect them. We're also grateful for our military and others serving throughout the world. When I say these things, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, the Lord.
I declare the allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a minute to do the last meeting for consideration. Are there any amendments or corrections to those minutes?
I didn't see any, so I'm going to call.
I did see one. Can't remember exactly what it was, but I'll get with you. I have the original just corrected, it was just a.
We approve with the man on the mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes, we have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. And we have our public comment period at this time. Are there any in the audience who would like to take up to three minutes to address the council? Preston, were you on the agenda tonight?
No, we're just here in case there's any questions or anything that needs to move forward.
Okay. Excellent. Do you wanna, you know, would you mind taking just a minute or two?
Sure.
And, uh, I know there was a couple of things we discussed in our, I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, not at all.
In our Arts Parks and Rec Committee, and I know Rhonda goes there too. Some things that maybe just, I could report on that.
Yeah, and I refer to some of the budget things for July.
Correct. Yeah.
So when we're looking at, we're all getting more well versed in the public hearings and how to do things within the city regulations, so we're getting trained in that, but we're also looking at adjusting, we have the budget set, and Rhonda will probably speak to this as well. Currently, the budget, what we're standing before was five thousand for each committee, we want a five thousand. Um, what we have now is, there is an extra eight thousand put into the budget. I'm looking to have that stay there, because first we're looking at this little oversight, but we actually look at that that fits with what we have going on, where the budget for fourth of July will be concerts going, and then also the actual. So that would be for the fourth of July, and we also talked about.
Yeah, instead of having the fourth of July separate and Missoula Arts Theater or whatever, I'd use Arts Theater, that's what happened. Yeah. Then we would just, everything would be included in the Arts Parks and Rec budget, and there wouldn't be these appendages or other sums of money that we'd have to account or keep track of. And so that was a discussion that was approved. And for a decision that was approved by the Arts Parks and Rec Committee, to have more council to ratify at some point. It probably wouldn't be tonight, but it'd be a nice meeting, yeah.
And you could promote the next agenda with the city council. And one of the reasons we also wanted to do that was to have better accounting for the fourth of July, to see what our actual costs are, because it's being taken from city budget, Arts Parks and Rec budget, and this will just be an easier stream of ways to see what our budget is, whether we need to actually fundraise, if we're over budget. Any other questions from council or our Parks and Rec Committee?
I appreciate your service.
Yeah, I think it's, I think, uh, from my point of view, everything's just becoming more and more refined, everything's getting better and better, and really optimistic and looking forward to things that we can do in the near future and let future future.
Absolutely, and I feel like as our community, we're actually getting more relations with organizations outside of the city, and we've got upcoming events with the family here, right, of the 12th, that we hope to do this year. And we actually have an afternoon committee in attendance, we hope to have more this year, and National Winter Fest, and the art schools working with the Little Liberty Designs, we have fall.
AKA October fest.
And, sorry, and we're. I might have to find that place somewhere.
I don't think you're.
Good, won't it hurt?
You've made everything you just said.
I don't know, all that is on.
Well, thank you, Preston. Appreciate how you guys do. Charles, nice to see you tonight, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Council, this is perfect, I appreciate it.
All right. Maybe I can make, I'd like if somebody scratched that off my paper.
Yeah.
Next one. All right, fiscal year 2020 budget revision and closing. Rhonda. And then we'll just go into the next 2023.
Okay, that's good. Um, so you've got in front of you, you've got your closing summary, looks like that there on the screen. Um, basically, although there was a lot of re-mapping done, and we worked very hard to try and get things as transparent as we possibly could, so I talked to Donald and Mayor Both earlier, and I was scrambling, looking, trying to figure out why things seem to be off so much. And, you know, as it's easy to do, we took some force for the trees, but if we look at the bottom of page one, we are one tenth of a percent off of the budget overall, even though things are mapping in different places. We really do not have an easy way to to trace where things have been matched historically, and I guess I feel like it's not worth the time or effort, it's gonna be irrelevant, because at this point, we're doing everything we can to try and have everything in the proper bucket, so I wanna feel really good about if we feel like we need to make a rate increase. We know exactly what our costs are that are really pertaining to that particular department, where we don't have things all over. Going forward, this is gonna look a little bit cleaner, but it's still a good story in the end. So to true up the budget, we'll need, um, an additional seven thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars pushed to fiscal year twenty-two. This also includes nine hundred one dollars that will be transferred to cover capital expenses and we're gonna get back here in just a minute, so. All in all, um, oh, ARPA funds, we actually spent four thousand five hundred dollars, it's all out of last year's ARPA funds. If you remember, that was the amount that had been overcommitted on the Care Back Funds that we all have utilized, so. And I have some people that believe, and, um, so we still have four hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars of the ARPA funds, and we have received our supplement. So we do have another two hundred for four hundred twenty-eight thousand that has just been received. So, um, and those are being earmarked for some of our capital projects. Capital projects, um, basically, we're transferring seven hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars of the overage from the general fund, and I would just subsidize four hundred and forty thousand um, to, to true up our capital expenditures. There are a couple of projects that we didn't have much progress with, but they have been re-budgeted for this coming year. The nature park being one of those, um, as well as the airport projects, some of those things. And so we actually were able to do one point five million in capital projects last year. The fire equipment, I just put a marker in there because we are still waiting for lots of our fire equipment. We have not received the water tender yet, although we don't know it's in Arizona, it's getting close, and we're still waiting on helmets that have been on back order for a very long time, so. But the, the money is there earmarked for those. Water department, um, year over year, if you look at the bottom line on page three, um, last year there were a four percent profit this year, and sixteen percent profit, and again, the water department was kind of funding half of the city, and so I have actually remapped everything so that the water department, I, I can look at that to see exactly what our costs are in the water department going forward. And if we ever get to the place where we feel like we need to increase rates, we have some things all over to stand on, so. And, uh, sewer fund again, it's struggled a little bit with some of the remapping. This is gonna change a little bit as we reorganized the departments a little bit, so, um, what's now in the water department under, um, stormwater will move to the sewer department. All the remapping's been done, but it will just take effect for the new fiscal year. So again, it makes it a little bit more difficult to look at year-on-year comparisons by maybe line items. But as we get things mapped, it will help us to know where we do need to make cuts, or, you know, look at increases in fees, or whatever it is that's necessary. Um, and I also put twelve thousand dollars in there to pay for three water, or three coverage week, and, um, so ultimately, the contract we have with K and K, we lost twelve thousand six hundred forty-two.
One quick question, Rhonda. On this. Well, it was the secondary water that I was looking at. I wouldn't really lose him four hundred forty-seven thousand on secondary.
We are not, because actually, if you look at that, um, last year, we, um, we brought in four hundred twenty-one thousand. For whatever reason, it was a, a budget increase to eight hundred eighty thousand for secondary water. Their increase is significant year-on-year, it just did not make that. And, you know, not, not to excuse myself from anything, I've been here a year at this point, but this was like two weeks old when I you know, there, there were a lot of things that, and, and I actually had to apologize to Ryan today because, you know, it's been such a learning curve, learning the general fund this year that I really feel like I've just completely ignored the water and sewer departments, and, you know, so that definitely be able to help them going forward to make sure that we're doing the very best we can to keep within our budget and do the best we can.
Does the council have any questions for Rhonda?
I just had one about the, because I appreciate, you know, me data, I like the prior current, you know, I like to see trends. When we get to the new software, which you said is coming soon, will they have path data as well that?
Absolutely.
So that way we can look at that better.
Absolutely. The best of my understanding, you will all have a login and have access to the system, I'll be able to push reports to you through the system. I won't be creating or, it's very cumbersome.
Right, and that's what I was concerned about, one, it's cumbersome, but two, I think it's difficult, like I said, you've been trying to map things, and it's difficult to see exactly what's where and why something's spent here and there, and, and I applaud your efforts to map that, because I do think it's important, you know, with the transparency, as well as us being able to look at those trends, so I'm excited about the software to be able to do that, but I just wanna make sure we have path data that we can then see those things as well.
Absolutely, they're gonna roll over several years. They're gonna go back in seven, ten years, something like that, and bring the data over. Yes, that will, that will be good. One thing I will mention, um, we do have about thirty-five thousand dollars in the ARP that was unspent this year.
APR.
What did I call it?
ARP, you were close.
Sorry, guys.
It's okay.
Arts Parks and Rec has about thirty-five thousand dollars that, um, I have earmarked to be pushed to a sinking fund that would be at their disposal with your approval for future spending. And that would be above and beyond what they have in this year's budget.
So to kind of clarify, when we when we started the APR and we started giving them a budget, we told them that we would allow them to grow funds over, over that they didn't spend previously, and so we have it on the books, we have it maybe not in the bank, but we have it on the books, we're keeping track of what that amount is, and right now, after what, two and a half years of doing that?
Close to three, yeah.
Close to three years, they have thirty-five thousand that they haven't spent over those three years, and then we added another, another twenty-eight thousand. With that twenty-eight thousand coming before the council next, council meeting to be approved, that would include everything that they, that they deal with and not have these separate budgets, but anyway, just to give you an idea, so that's fifty-three thousand change.
That would be fully available.
Yeah, I just saw some back there cheering, singing, party.
I'm trying to keep it.
Look back through that, and I've talked to a couple of councilmen, I think with that, would probably come maybe a, an expectation or greater expectation from the council of spending some of those funds on certain things that, you know, not to, not say that we wouldn't want just to bank all this money, and part of the idea behind that too is if we go to CIB or grants, those funding, then they would be participants as far as match funding for some of those things, if that makes sense, so. Like if they wanted, like the pickleball court, so I remember talking to Royce about this and saying, if you bank your money, you can use that money as as leverage for grants and things like that, so I think we we need to make sure that they understand when they want those types of things, that they might be spending some of that budget. I suppose.
And honestly, a lot of, I think a lot, but good portion of the spend that was done this year was done, donations that they went out and they collected within the community over different activities, so.
Yeah, they didn't do any great at that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Rhonda?
No.
Seeing none, would entertain a motion to go into a public hearing?
I may, we might go into public hearing on budget.
Get these three on a second. I'm from Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll consider ourselves in the public, public hearing, are there any members of the public that would like to speak concerning the budget that has been proposed, which is the final twenty-two budget, finally. Seeing none, would entertain a motion to go back into regular session?
Still moved.
Did we give enough time, did anybody want to speak on the budget? Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Boozabark, do we have a second? Second by Councilman Plower, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll consider ourselves back in regular session. Let's go ahead and take a vote on that real quick, and then we'll get right to the next one. Do we have a, um, a motion to approve?
I move we approve the fiscal twenty, year twenty-two, whatever budget. Fiscal twenty-two.
Did you get that in the? Twenty-two, whatever.
That thing we've been talking about.
So we have a motion to approve the twenty-two fiscal budget, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Councilman Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passing, it is approved.
Okay, and just, just to add to that, I do intend to put together more of a report to kind of give you more of a synopsis of what had taken place with past year, I just ran out of time to do that, and we'll not be here next year for, or next year, next month for council, but I will have that prepared so that, that you can have that, and then if you have further questions, you can ask me, but we're at a deadline crunch for me, we enter this into the state's systems.
I just want to tell you, in past year, only up point one percent budget, and with gas and things going up, that's very impressive, you know, because those are things you can't anticipate, so I'm sure.
Thank you. We had to make a few adjustments, and that, because I was going through doing all the professional change to the new budget. I'm like, okay, we got inflation, we got recession, we got supply chain challenges, we got postal uncertainty, we've got all these things. But I'm fairly pleased with how things have been working out, so. The fiscal year financial update, this is, there's not a whole lot of stories, you're gonna see a lot of zeros on there, there's not been a lot of spend in this year thus far, but, um, back where we're at so far.
We're at a negative two percent used.
Yes.
Total operating expense.
Yes, we actually had a couple of adjusting entries, and then the, you know, public work, public safety at this moment has that's a credit balance in there for Kenny's.
You've already mentioned the four twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Excellent, are there any questions on, uh, twenty-three financial update? Excellent. All right, thanks Rhonda for all you do.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you. We have a public hearing. We have a public hearing concerning a couple of things, but let's go ahead and, who's going to present on the animal shelter tonight?
Our thinking, mayor of the council, I think we're a little different. But the animal shelter, Rose wanted to be here, but she couldn't be here. Let's propose another fee change. And the way this one would work is that we would offer cat and dog vaccines to the community for $6, and that's a different one.
We have the vaccinations there and they're.
Vaccinations there.
And they're trained to do it, right?
They're trained to do it, yeah, trained to do it. So they can do it, they can also track it, the new program that they have contract.
That's perfect.
They've got to. They also want to update the vet charge for the rabies, so the vet, what the vet charges is go up, and they give a voucher, and then they pay back the city. So we want to just more closely match what the vet is charging for the rabies vaccine. And then the last thing she has is, she wants to lower the price of microchips. They cost seven and a half to $10, to $10. They want to lower the fee to $15, and the goal is that more people will come in and get their animal microchip. And the whole cost of the animal shelters, when you give an animal, give them out, it's actually a challenge.
On the vaccination, the $6, what's the current, is that the current price, or is that?
No, that's what she wants to go to.
What's the current?
We don't.
Or we don't offer? And what's the cost to us for that? Is it $6?
It's following the.
So according to the animal advocacy from Rose, the price for various vaccines, like the cost of the city ranges from like 40 cents for, you know, a syringe to about $2 for the vaccine dose itself. So the $6 is the flat rate that she determined to cover all of those costs.
Right, I do like it says like the adult parvo and dysmembers of 444. So even at the $6, you're still making a dollar or two. But the goal is that more people will come in and get their animal vaccinated, and that will help with the disease in the community. And it also gets these girls familiar with the animal. Once again, if it shows up, we might be able to identify and give it out.
I like this. Well, I know we had talked about when Rose took over for them to get trained and do these types of things, and even the euthanization and those types of things, which is a little bit a touchy subject. But I like the idea, this is a creative way to kind of make some of that money back, because we're, we're having, yeah, we're having to vaccinate anyway on some of them, the ones that aren't microchipped and things like that. This is going to put a price on it, and I'm hoping that's what we charge if a stray animal comes in, we vaccinate it. If the owner comes in, it's mandatory to pay that.
So this, this will be, must be a community service as well, like, does anyone want to bring their animal in, they can do that.
Come on with the microchips, right?
Right, the microchips, the vaccine too, so they're offering the vaccinations, so they take the dog in, vaccinate it, it's $6.
I like the thought process behind it.
Yeah, and like she's got them trained down there to do it.
Any other questions for? I don't know whether they call you Lieutenant Tucker, or is it lieutenant? Okay.
I don't care if your questions like Rose could, but.
She would have a presentation.
It would have been more detailed.
All right, if none, let's go ahead and do the, we're doing the planning and zoning fees, Drew, is that you? We'll have you do the planning and zoning fees, and then we'll go into public hearing and address them both at one time.
Sure. So we're planning and zoning portion of the, so I can take the overall changes. So what we have on the planning and zoning was our engineering review costs. Right now, we're absorbing those costs on parcel or plat reviews. So what we're wanting to do is, whatever that cost is, pass it on to the customer. And we did get some comparables on the, on the minor side of the subdivision versus the large-scale subdivision, we're varying from $300 to $500. So it's not a huge cost, but it's something that we felt like we're not being reimbursed for, so we'd like to pass that on to the customer.
So it's, you don't have a set fee in here?
No, so when we're invoiced, we will invoice the customer before the planning.
Grant, what is your thought on that? Where that would vary, would it be better to have a fixed cost for a small subdivision than a fixed cost for a larger, and put them at three and five or something, or? I'm just wondering about the, yeah.
It will, it will change too. This is just basically, it could range from A to B. It could possibly be more than that as well, depending on how complex the subdivision is.
How is it written? Because I can't read it. He says, you know, actual costs. Invoice.
I don't find that funny, it is, but if you want it, it's changing.
I'm okay with that, with it, as long as it's, I guess the invoice be provided, and then, do we need a more detailed description of that?
Is it our engineer that does it, or do they?
Yes, it's our engineer. Like Jones and Melt.
Jones and Melt.
They're doing it now, we're just paying for it. It's not included in the permit application fee, so this is something.
Wouldn't you have the application, does it state that on there?
It, it will.
It will. As long as it spells it out, and they're, you'd be aware of it.
Is there a way for them to get an estimate before they?
Yes, we've got a estimate sheet from Jones and Melt that we can provide to them, as far as.
That's, that would be my concern, if they go and, and if it's a three or a five, they know right up front what they're paying. If it's just whatever the invoice could be.
Budget.
Yeah.
That's really helpful to bring to your reference, is there a breakdown, are you anticipating costs?
Yes, so you'll see the lot split and minor subdivision fee is one to 200, that's single site plan review, one to three, and then large residential subdivision is three to five.
And that's what they're anticipating?
Yes, that'll be their, that'll be their anticipated. If it's something huge, you know, obviously, that's going to have to be an increase in that, so. But right now, we're, we're eating the whole rest of that, and we're not recreating that cost in our application, so. That'll help us out on our bottom line a little bit.
I agree with the mayor, I think as long as we let people know ahead of time, so they're aware, I think that's the important thing.
And we can include that with our application.
And then, what was the other fee?
It was, so it's just basically that payment will be required before the final plat.
And the yellow, the manufacturing.
I can help it explain.
Yeah, if you want, those are, those are not due, we're just putting it into our, I'll explain that.
So the whole fee schedule is kind of going through some revision, just to make sure everything is documented accurately and is reflected in a way that's easy for people to understand. So anything that's been highlighted in yellow, those are not new fees. They're fees that the city has historically been charging, that either weren't listed in the fee schedule, but were documented on planning and zoning applications, on the planning and zoning portion of our website, that just needed to be reflected in the fee schedule. Same with the animal shelter page, there was a couple of fees that were highlighted in yellow, that was not new fees, it was fees that were already being charged that were not, you know, that had previously been approved, but for whatever reason, weren't in previous revisions, so anything that's in yellow. And then just as far as the head, like, everything really does need to be gone through, mostly for clarity and to make sure it's easy for citizens to understand what they're being charged under what circumstances. So as much as we don't want to constantly be bringing the fee schedule forward or revision, I am helping with all departments to make sure they're really happy with their section, and it's as clear anything as possible, so in the coming months, I hope to have a finished product, really good revision, instead of coming back and all of these little pieces trying to fix it.
Okay. We just appreciate you guys catching these.
Yes.
And getting taken care of, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, sunshine. Any questions by the council so far?
Seeing none, to the public hearing.
Thanks, Tom.
For fee schedule for, for the planning and zoning and for the animal shelter.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second by Councilman Clowerd, all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll consider ourselves in the public hearing. We'll open up to the public, are there any here tonight that would like to comment or have any questions on the fees as they've been presented? Seeing none, would entertain a motion?
I move we go back to regular session.
Okay, do we have a second? Second. That councilman there, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll consider ourselves back in regular sessions, and would entertain a motion to approve?
I move we approve the fee schedule with the changes and the additions and things that weren't previously there.
Thank you. Second by Councilman Clowerd, we have one rolling right along, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If motion passes. Thank you. Planning and zoning, U D M C minor subdivision?
We're looking for approval from the council on minor subdivision split. We have about 12.3 acres we're acquiring from U D M C for our nature park. Ran this through planning and zoning, it all was well there, so we're just looking for a signature from you guys. Approval, thank you.
So it's going to follow the crick, the copperwood crease?
Yes, basically, it's kind of hard to see the blue outline there. There you go. So that'll be state three on your far right.
One other question, just because it come up in some of our meetings, did we ever find out that is all in Roosevelt City, right? Because there was a question of whether any portion of that was Duchenne County, which wouldn't matter anyway.
It is all in Roosevelt, so.
Excellent. And this, part of the reason Grant had suggested, city attorney had suggested that we have this done before we spend any more money on that, so this has really been anticipated and awaited that this is done, so that we can get going on the rest of that project. And so appreciate everybody's involvement in giving it to us tonight, so we can keep on. Any question from the council?
And then we approve.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. Second by Councilman Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Am I doing Ryan's?
You're good.
You trying to make bets? How many more do I need, Brian?
Just for the public's knowledge, we had 450,000, I think, saved for this project up to this point, right? Just, we got another driven poll in our pocket.
This nature park is really, it's obviously, it's getting the accreditation to the community.
All right, nature park phase one cost estimate approval.
Jeff, Jason.
Jason, I called you Jeff, you should change your name.
My brother's name is Jeff, and I'm used to being called Jeff by my dad.
Do you know how many engineers I know that are Jeff? Jason, sorry about that.
Not a bad name. All right, there's, there's two sheets here, and then, so Ryan and Josh have made it put together a revised budget, things a little bit different from what we originally put the budget together for our first grants the last couple of years. And there's been a few things that have changed since, and so, go back to the other sheet. Got it. Okay, so on here, we've got three different sections based on the color, and based on the funding source too. So we, we have funding that has been granted to the city from the T I P, the Outdoor Recreation Grant, and also the W R grant, W R I grant, so there are specific things that those grants can pay for, and the T I P is specifically for the trails through and outside of the park. Outdoor Recreation Grant is also for the trails through the park, and can be used for other park improvements, like the amphitheater, some of the benches, and the ponds, I think, as well as bridges. And then we also have that second section now, so you have two grants from the Office of Outdoor Recreation, you've got the phase one and a phase two, so that second section I've broken with the phase two, so you've got the, like, pavilion, water and sewer going to the park, bathroom installation, irrigation, amphitheater, park landscaping. Those are basically the phases of this project, to turn it from just on the trails to the actual park. And then the third one is that W R I grant that's used specifically for building a pond. And that doesn't mean that it's phase three, it, it kind of intermeals in there, but it's a separate pot of money specifically for that pond. And that's money basically to pay D N R to come out and build it. They've got staff that are able to come and do the work. And last I talked to D N R, they were scheduled to come out, to do that pond work, to, to get it leveled up and get the inlet, outlet structures built and the liner installed. So that funding is, is meant for that, and it can also pay for some of the materials for that pond as well. Some of the materials were put on that grant application as a match, as donations from the city or county or wherever we make these donations, so. Basically, that first pot of money and the, the first things that need to be done is getting those bridges. The, the bridges are going to be kind of our long wait item on this project, so the sooner we get those ordered or established how we want to obtain those, the better, to be able to get this pond, the, the park built and the trails built and connected. And part of it's going to be intermealed, like I say, we're not going to be building all of the trails before we build a pond, because the pond is going to be a hole, it's going to be a mess, and they'll destroy whatever trail we put in front of it, so we'll do the trail in phases, and then, once the pond is completed, we'll finish the trailer and the pond, and clear it up nice, so. It's, it's kind of a mess, that way when you look at scheduling, but it, it'll work out, you just need to take it like the same phase at a time. So ultimately, the, the other sheet shows the, the totals for each of those phases, so the phase one, and the total funding that is available from the grants we have, and the remaining responsibility that the city has, so that's, people can get into it. There it is. Okay, so that first phase, the T I P and the Outdoor Recreation Grant totaled 643,400 that's available, and then the remaining responsibility for that phase one, that's the, the bridges and a lot of the trails throughout the park, comes out to 198,000. I will point out that this 198,000 and, and this other city responsibilities that are listed here are not necessarily cash, it can also be any kind of labor and materials donations as well. Specifically for the Outdoor Recreation Grant, at least half of the match has to be cashed in, but the other half can be labor, materials, donated hours.
Absolutely. When you say the Outdoor Grant, aside from the other grants and things, monies that we've already received?
Yeah, yep. So you received two grants in that Office of Outdoor Recreation totaling 300,000, so ultimately, the city is on the hook for at least 150,000 cash for matching that last couple of years.
We already have 150 saved.
So, yeah, the phase two was 560,000, that's, that's kind of those finishing touches on the park that, that are remaining, and the amphitheater, things of that nature. And then, there, that's where a lot of the responsibility comes into play, and I know that Ryan's talked to a lot of, a lot of people that have wanted to go make time in materials and, and help build these pieces of the park. and, and help build these pieces of the park, and this is where a lot of that in-kind matched labor can go and, and materials like can go. That's a big chunk right there. And then that WRI grant is just covering, like I said, that left the pond construction on that one. Then there was a contingency on the, on the previous page for the project, we built in a buffer in case you wanted to hire the whole thing out. Perhaps contingency in there when things go wrong, or if you're, if things come up during construction, things go wrong, you, you want to have that contingency in there. Ultimately, that'll be city responsibility unless we, we look at it and say, maybe there's other grants that could be invested next to down the road. So when it comes down to the total grants, you have, right now, you have $922,000 for excuse me, $922,450 for grants, and then, for the rest of the project, we're looking at a responsibility from the city of $1,000,636 for what we have estimated here. That being said, some of these estimates are a little bit on the high side. We want to be, make sure we, there's enough funding so that we don't get to the project where there's a mess, we have to go look for more funding. So this is a budgetary number. Some of these we have gotten quotes on, and some of the line items are a little bit lower than we have listed in this budget, but depending on how you go about it. So if you order the bridges now, they would come in lower. If you wanted to have a contractor order the bridges in itself, then it, it may be higher, so we can put a, a higher budget number depending on how you want to go about that.
Are we here to approve phase one of the whole thing?
Yeah, we'd like to get some direction on, because we'd like to get some of these things ordered, so we can start getting phase one done. So ultimately, that's kind of why we're bringing this up to...
So, I thought that I had sort of $1,000,000, let's say we do the whole project, does this include the painting of the lines on the streets and everything else?
So this, this did not include that. We'll have to add that much item later.
Okay, because that, to me, that's a critical item, especially, I'd like to see that in phase one, getting those painted lines from where the trail will pan behind the hospital over to the power subdivision and up over to the walking path.
Yeah, and you're, you're correct, Mayor. We actually had Jason right before the meeting create a map for us with all that, but we weren't able to get it on here in time, so we was wanting to plan on adding that piece to puzzle.
I've got a paper one, you guys, that's real, just to look at.
Yes, exactly. And then, and then the other thought was to possibly get the, well, it'll be with the State Street project that we're doing next spring, same thing, walking by the lines, painted from, well, as far as south as we can go, probably at least to the gulch, because that's where that path will come over, onto the walking path. So that'll complete, once this phase one's done, as far as walking by through path, I have to complete two-thirds, at least two-thirds of the whole trail system.
Yeah.
So what, I wish we had the numbers, I hate to approve this, but the numbers, can we, but you have 200, what, 229 in contingency?
Yeah.
Can we, and the other suggestion that I would make, too, is the $1,000,636 instead of pulling that right, I know we've got money in our budget for this probably, I'm still one that I would rather use somebody else's money to build this. Is there a way we can go get low for that amount? I know that's counterintuitive to what some people think, but, so we're not pulling that money out of the budget, we're keeping that money in our budget, and we're getting a loan that we can pay off over a set of years.
Absolutely, because there are options to do.
So I'm wondering if something we can go to, because CIB normally will just do a loan, we're just asking a hundred percent loan, we can get a pretty low interest loan.
There would be timing, would, it's a little big, there are two projects, but it is absolutely possible.
We have enough money and everything, because we're, we only need $150,000 or $100 for phase one cash out of pocket, right? So I say we move, my, my suggestion would be move forward with phase one. I would like to see the lines included in the phase one, though, so the painting of the lines. And then, we could, we could, like, getting a loan on what we had to match for the other grants from, let's see, so by spring, we could easily have that, because we're ready to get through phase one this year, maybe, right?
Does that give you just enough if we, if we approved to begin on phase one and come back with, I mean, does that get us started?
So the bridges are on phase, phase one.
Yeah.
And we definitely want to do those, right?
Yeah, we just wanted to get some of it knocked out, because we were locked in with this thing with the hospital, too, to make sure...
And phase one is everything that they require, so we're pretty clear in the line we don't have to worry about.
Right, correct.
Any repercussions, right?
Yeah, and we're six to month, six to eight months out, right, on the bridges, so we're kind of thinking ahead here. We didn't want to be springtime and all of a sudden we're waiting on bridges, and then we can't finish the project.
Do you have a ballpark figure with the lines we've cost paint?
I, you know what, I, I should have, but I don't have it with me right now, but I can get that pretty real easy.
So could we do, like, the approval of phase one, including the painted lines not to exceed X amount, so that they can get started? As a council, fill that gap.
What X amount are we looking at?
Yeah.
20%?
So I had a link on there. The striping, and now are you, you're wanting to do additional striping beyond that, just putting on a substantial part, you also wanting to do stage, along State Street, all the way down to Dry Gulch and up to the park, is that what you're making?
Yeah, so Dry Gulch, from Dry Gulch to Second South, is that where the, yeah, the school is at, so the Second South over to the walking path.
Okay.
But I, I think we can incorporate some of that into what we're doing with, with the other engineer, in the CIPCO, my street, yeah.
There'll be a section of that, though, you won't be able to do until State Street's done.
Right, and that's what I mean, that's why I'm thinking we ought to try to incorporate that with what we're doing with CIPCO and State Street.
Yeah.
And maybe adding that on to that part.
We are speaking with Kirby, we do have a, you know, so the cost will be a lot less, we have the abilities to do it.
So could we say, approve phase one, include the striping, not to exceed 10% of the project costs, something like that?
Yeah.
Because all, all that's doing is giving you the authorization, authorization to go and do everything else, and then if that striping comes in more than 10%, it doesn't solve the rest of the project down, we just have to come back and get that rate approved.
That'd be wonderful.
And do you want, do you want to try to do the whole approval of the whole thing, or is that good enough to, for now, and then come back with the other, thinking, all phases?
I think just do this right now, if you need to go and give a plug.
Sounds good. And then we can look for other loan opportunities with the rest of the phases.
If we just get a schedule, we can please come down, please let's be in the game.
Excellent.
I move we approve, as explained by the mayor, the phase one with the painting not to exceed the 10%, painting of the lines not to exceed 10%.
Project costs.
Project costs of phase ones, yeah.
One second. We have a motion in a second. All in, my counsel, Mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other?
As you made the motion.
Excellent, motion passes. Phase one, and then we'll look for some opportunities, but I just don't, we're okay with money on those things, but I still, there's just something about using somebody else's money.
Oh, that's fine.
Then if we need to pay it off, we always, we have the money to pay it, but that still brings up that money to leverage, and everything else.
Yeah, we just had some, like, outdoor rec grant, they've asked, reached out, hey, have you spent any money yet and stuff, so we're just kind of getting anxious, like, we got to start spending money, so.
Well, this would be great, super excited.
Yeah, and just, just to give a little bit of an update, too, we, we are working with DNR, or excuse me, Division of Water Rights on the pond, small dance application and stream alteration, be able to install the bridges. They've been working on with us on that, and then, also, we did talk to some of the property owners, and we got response from Mr. Phillips that has property just to the west of the park. So far, he's been the only one that's been looking for sort of a reimbursement or, or compensation for an easement through his property, and we do have some ranges on what that could be, and we'll probably be coming for some direction on that. But basically, there's just a tenth of a mile through, maybe a tenth of an acre through his property that would be taking us the trail. The other property owners have been good to work with, there, there's been a few requests of like, you know, fencing, fencing protecting their animals, things like that. We're moving forward with it, we are looking, we've asked for survey quotes to get right away matched together, so we can put official piece of documents together, before we get everybody on board.
Excellent.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Do you have a question about the, you mentioned stream, take alteration, stream stabilization stuff, are they going to, just kind of hit it where the, where the bridges are? How are they going to, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we put it where the bridges are, which is going to be putting abutments on each side, and then crane dropping the bridges in place, but having the stream alteration permitted in place so that we can move equipment through the stream and those parts in place.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. So, as you know, COVID has taught us a lot of things, one thing that's definitely taught me in all aspects of our life is we have way too many meetings. However, it can also be said that meetings aren't important, but we do need some meetings. I just, I'm going to stop you right there. You just said we had too many meetings, but I just realized what it was, I'm not a voting member on the minutes, and so my name needs to be, that's what it was, I just stopped again, so you can just start from the whole and everything. Okay, well, since we're striking, the mayor, I'll just talk to the council. So as you know, we do have scheduled for council meetings to be twice a month. What we'd like to discuss with council and give some direction is, is having that first Tuesday of each month, having a true council work session. The purpose behind the work session is to have an open dialogue, a conversation with council. We do want to be very mindful of council's time, it can very easily turn into a four, five, six hour meeting, we want to get away from that. However, what we do want to have is to have that, it is a public meeting, public is invited, be advertised, but it will be a, an avenue to have a discussion, so we as staff can update council wherever at, get general direction without getting an official vote on making a decision. For example, as we have, we have multiple items that we'd like to discuss in September, but we'll simply be, council, we sit around the table, rather than a formal setting like this, sit around a conference table, explain some of the project, the council can essentially give us a thumbs up, thumbs down, are we headed down the right road? As you know, you as council, you're the policy makers. We as staff are here to accomplish the goals that you as elected officials have given and set for the community. So we're looking for a work session to be truly that a work session, where we can have those discussions, keep them very, very basic, but then, that way we have a work session in the following council meeting, when we're requesting official action from council, you are even more up to date and have information, you can talk to constituents, see if it's something that you want us to continue to do. And so that's what we're looking at right now, and so, as an example with that, one of the items that we were discussing is our first work session, we have the ambulance shed, it is no longer the ambulance shed, it's an empty building, we have some great ideas in there of things we can use the building for, as a museum, as a community center, as different options. Well, the idea is we'll have our first council work session in that building to get ideas. You as council members are going to decide what we do with that, the best way to do that is to be in the building and see it. So with that, there are multiple options about the work session as well, it's been discussed, we try to have one over lunchtime. A good thing about lunch work session is we are definitely constrained by time, because most people only have one hour. The downside of that is, we understand you're professionals in your, in your businesses, and it might be hard to break away during a lunch hour. So we want to discuss with council briefly tonight, if we, if there is desire to have these work sessions, do we want to have it at a separate location periodically, maybe once, maybe multiple times, and what time of day works best for council to have those work discussions? I know I threw a lot of things at you about the purpose of these, but it is ultimately not to have more of it. An informal discussion, it's still a public meeting, so we as staff can make sure we're accomplishing the goals that you want, rather than us investing a lot of time in a direction that's probably advantageous to the city.
I'm supportive of whatever the council wants, so I'm good either way. I can do lunch, or I can do regular 5:30, so whatever.
If it is over lunch, lunch will be provided. Both. As of right now, we did advertise, we do have it scheduled for the first Tuesday of each month, so.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I like the idea, we'll, just being able to put schedules being pretty tough.
It'll be tough for me to make lunch, just because I don't work in a mill.
You don't need to make the lunch for me before you, you just need to think. My counsel, bring it from Burnell.
Yeah, I, I think it'll be tough for me, but I'm pretty sure I can make that all of them, you know, if it's, if we're doing them every month, then I may not make every one of them, I'll be rotating maybe one more, just maybe.
My, this is just my thoughts on changing it up each month, is for the transparency and convenience to the public, I think it ought to be fairly standard of where we meet and what time we meet, just, just so that, I don't know, I don't want the public to get it in their minds that we're, we're always trying to dodge what they're doing, if that makes sense. And then the, my only concern with the building over here, and, is the concern whether it's a museum, or whether it's, whatever it turns into, is there's not ADA, it's not ADA compliant, and so to be able to hold a meeting there, I don't know, and have it open to the public, I don't know that would be a good idea until it is, actually. I mean, I don't mind going over there and meeting as a social gathering before our work meeting, just to let it begin, things like that, but I just wouldn't want it to come up that there's stairs and people that are, you know, not thick on health, but of age, might have, will be getting in, and it is a little bit treacherous, those stairs are not, they were before we had Dean as our billing inspector, and there, I don't even think they would be code as far as the stairs, and so, that would be, those would be my concerns, it's just floating around and then making sure that we're in a place where it's accessible to the public.
If we do it at lunch, which I'm totally on board with, could we get Counselor Mayor maybe on a Zoom call, so that way he could be involved and not have to try to run over from Burnell or wherever he's at?
Absolutely, that's a great, great.
I, I just think that, I would rather him have the opportunity to be there, but if he's just there on a Zoom, he could still ask questions and make comment.
That's a good idea, if you could accommodate that way, then I'd definitely be able to make just about every one of them, so.
Absolutely.
So I guess we're all supportive of it, so do we have to have a motion or anything, or just plan the next?
If we're changing the location and setting the time, we go down the division.
I don't think we're changing location, but we are changing the time if you, if we're doing a lunch meeting, so.
The location, just for that first meeting you wanted to do at the old, what's it called, the fire?
The ambulance shed. I would like to clarify, because if we can't do it there, if it's not ADA, I want to make sure that we don't do it there. Doing one, especially worse as you're talking about the building. I think it's fine for one, but Jeremy's giving one that we probably shouldn't do.
Can we? Can we Zoom from over there?
If internet is provided, yes, we can. We have, I just stopped the camera on the meeting this morning, was wondering if there's currently internet provided there and I
What what if we just?
I made to that meeting.
What if we just plan on it here for lunch, but that we make arrangements with Mr. Bake or Ryan or someone that we go over and look at that building in the interim on our schedule? Because I I think all of us have different schedules and if you can't get in, maybe you bring some pictures of the, for those who can't. But I would just say between now and our work meeting, we just make an effort to get in and I'd be happy to set something up and do that. And then afterwards, we'll we'll have seen it. And then you could have some pictures in case someone wasn't able to make it in that time. And let's just meet here. And then we're meeting, you know, I just would like to keep the consistency and safety. And the only thing we're really changing is the the time. But that's, again, that's my opinion. And then if we do it on our own time, we're not as a quorum over there worrying if anyone thinks we're, you know, we just go individually as we can. And Mayor seems to be pretty familiar with it anyway, so just be probably the council that we need to go over that's not.
We as staff absolutely can take you to a meeting. We have a lot to do, so that could work absolutely, we're applying individual stages. We definitely.
I'm good with whatever you decide on that.
I'll move then we change the time to what, noon for lunch? Noon to one, does that work for council?
Yes.
Let's plan noon to one, if you can stay a little longer, you know. And I also moved that we add Zoom for Councilman Baird and possibly Councilman White. In case, and that way that's an option for them to be able to attend and and be a part of the meeting, so.
Not amend, not just Zoom as needed.
Yeah, Zoom as needed.
Well, I'd say we Zoom for public anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we we YouTube for the public regarding this.
Okay.
And then Zoom just enables that interaction. So we're actually prior to providing to the public, we have.
We're only doing YouTube right now.
But we do whenever somebody says they're not able to attend, go.
Excellent.
Okay. Do we get, I have a motion and amendment, friendly amendment, I accepted.
Okay, so do we have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What you have? Thank you. And you might as well do your sitting manager report.
So one thing I just would like to report on is the staff's point of view. You might have heard there's been a lot of projects that have been planned in the basin. They've been in the media a lot in neighboring communities. A lot of projects have been stalled out from some of those communities on what they're doing. I'm glad to report as of right now, all of our big projects this year are progressing forward. As bits come in, projects might be modified. For example, we did not receive the best news on our gun range. However, speaking with the mayor, we are going to move forward and do what we can with the funds that we have. So I'm very pleased to, you know, talk with the public, that we are moving forward in the best way that we can. We're going to accomplish a lot this year. There are multiple projects, so everything from the gun range to the innovation hub, the sports complex, nature park trails, we are definitely going to make some progress and get a lot of, a lot of things down this year. I have thought to the staff, they've been phenomenal at getting these projects going. And it is a little disheartening, you might say, hearing the media talk so much about the other communities and the projects they're doing. But we as staff are very excited because we are definitely moving forward and there's a lot of good things that are going to happen. We had a really good turnout at E P I C this couple weeks ago. And I have received a ton of positive feedback from even neighboring communities. I had a mayor from a neighboring community call me up to tell me what a great event it was. So I want to pass that along, that we have a lot of wonderful things happening here in Roosevelt. And before I sit down, I'm going to actually have some time to talk about another great activity that we will have a first ever thing about here in a couple weeks.
Oh, I know you were just saying the newspaper had a reporting on our committees, but actually our Roosevelt City Slow Ride is on the front page of the newspaper this week, so that was pretty exciting for me. The flyer that's up on the screen here that you all have a copy of is for our first ride, which it's tricky pulling off events like this, so I had to push it back a little bit. Initially, I wanted to start this week, actually. Our first ride will be happening on August thirty first. Try County Health has been amazing to work with. They'll be hosting our little bike safety rodeo, so that'll be key for making sure people have a, how to check their helmets, make sure they're adjusted properly, you know, how to make hand signals, how to follow traffic while riding in the road. Because like I've mentioned in the past, when I addressed the council about this event, the whole purpose is to help people learn how to safely commute in our town. Which I think is really important.
Especially with the bike transport.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, we're we're trying to encourage active transport, so we need to start somewhere. I'm just really excited about the event. We have, I missed one of the bikes, only twelve of them got over to Red Mountain, but they've taken care of tuning them all up for us. I'll have those give away. I reached out to other people about you know, possibly donating some additional bikes, so we'll see what happens there. But it should be really fun. And I think all of you should have received an email copy of the flyer along with every city employee as well, so I have plenty of T-shirts and plenty of volunteer shirts if anybody wants to hop on their bike and help direct traffic, encourage people to ride safely, express.
I would love to help, but I actually teach at night at five thirty, so I won't be able to make it.
Right, it doesn't start till six. Right, it doesn't start till six, if you have time.
Um, I think, I think, I'll have to look at my schedule, I think I teach five to ten, so.
Really, I was trying to run.
I know, I love, and I love this. I think this is great and I really appreciate the bike raffle. I think that'll be a good way to manage that with, you know, and you may, we'll have twelve people, that's great, but at least.
Well, depending on attendance, I was kind of thinking of maybe, depending on how many people, if twelve people show up, I think I'd rather not raffle off all twelve bikes to just those twelve people that show up and and, you know, and spread them out across the following two bike rides. I'll need to be informed about these schedules for those who may.
And if I can sneak away, I will. I just, I know it's first night of class, it's always hard, so.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's only, your only rapport to individuals that don't have bikes, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
And they're not any.
What would that be?
Yeah, and I don't want to like, disparage the quality of the bikes, but these aren't, you know, super.
Right.
People who already have a bike are not going to be lined up to get these bikes. Right? They've done a great job repairing them, you know, it was awesome to actually take them from something that's an abandoned bike, it's just been discarded to something that they could actually use as an everyday commuter bike. You know, they they are what they are. They're free by, they're something that's going to be ridable, but then be a project for a while.
I think it's great.
Yeah, thank you.
I really appreciate, I know that was kind of a combined effort. Thank you for taking that on and.
Yes.
Thanks.
Sorry, Mayor, I have two more quick things. For one, I really want to appreciate Sunshine for what she's doing in this. Also appreciate Sunshine for, I mean, the media has been good. I know it wanted to come across, I was talking to you about the media, because they are wonderful. We actually have great media here in the basin. I just wish we could, we broadcast every single day of how great we are. Yes, our media are wonderful. I won't go on record saying that. Second, I also, since we have some of our community members here, I do want to thank them. One thing our city has a lot of is committees. Committees, I can tell you, a lot of cities hate committees because they're a pain in the neck. We have wonderful committees who are doing a lot of good work. We've got community members who care about the community, that's what matters most. And so half off the council for creating these committees and our community members for being involved and caring about our committee, our community. That's how we make progress work and that's how community comes together. So I just want to thank our communities for the work they're doing. And we do have our first golf committee meeting this Thursday. This Thursday, so we can kick off that new community there as well. I really am. And any questions for me?
No.
Just thanks for all you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Our bridges borders go down.
A move we approve.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, the second?
Senator Cloud. Do we need to approach, do we have an outing for us tonight? Just to follow up really quickly on the gun range, Josh's drive, we we had some awesome good news. One thing that we need to keep in mind is we did make a commitment to Ballard City to improve the road, so it might be beneficial for us to go back to Ballard City and say we denied the funding that we anticipated and renegotiate that, so that they're not anticipating we're going to spend a lot of money over there. But I did talk with Kevin, he's gotten home, we visited with Jim Marshall. They're still committed to participating, you know, the twenty thousand, I believe, is what they said they would contribute. We did talk to Moon Lake, that'll be on our next, well, that'll be, is that in our work meeting or is that in our next council meeting, Moon Lake coming in council? So we talked to them, they wanted easement to that, so we negotiated a little bit to pay for that easement, maybe going towards that gun range if that would be okay with the council. Just keep that in mind. It is a, it could, I shouldn't throw out numbers, but it could be a pretty significant, significant amount of money. And we did ask Yankton Johnson to go back to his board and explain to them what we would do with the money in anticipation that they might be a little more generous for that easement, so just some thoughts there. Councilor Cloud, do you have anything for us? And Councilman Allen?
All right.
Do we have any items for future discussion? I think the we do not have a closed session terms tonight, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move away to adjourn.
I got them all.
You want to sit? All right. Let's look at the pattern, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, thank you.